Calling to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, April 1st, 2025. Meeting to order, no kidding. I'm gonna, almost an April fool. Ask Commissioner Couch to open us with the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Your heavenly father, we're so thankful for this day and for all the many blessings that you bestow upon Columbia County. We ask for a special hedge of protection around our sheriff's officers, our firefighters, and our EMS workers. We ask that you be with us now as we work through these agenda items and help us to do all things in your will. In your most holy and precious name I pray, amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. The republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the March 18th, 2025 Commission Packet, as well as the March 18th, Budget Work Session. If you had a chance to review them, I'll accept the motion to do so.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of both meetings. Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. I believe there are no changes to the agenda.
Ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman?
Approved. Couple of special recognitions. Jay and Vice Chairman Couch is gonna present those. First is the proclamation of Native Plant Month.
Good evening. So tonight, we will be presenting a proclamation for Native Plant Month to the Georgia Native Plant Society. And do we have any other members here today? Planted to come up? And you sent over a slide for us to display, which we appreciate. So we'll read the proclamation, and then if either of you would like to say a few words, you're certainly welcome to do so. Whereas a native plant is defined as one that has evolved over thousands of years in a specific geographic region alongside local flora and fauna, without human intervention. And whereas native plants include large canopy trees, understory trees, shrubs, perennials, vines, and grasses that are indigenous to unique geographic regions with special soil moisture requirements and growing conditions. Whereas native plants are essential for a healthy, diverse, and sustainable ecosystem, and are critical for cleaning air, filtering water, and stabilizing soils. And whereas native plants provide food, including nectar, pollen, seeds, and foliage for native birds, caterpillars, butterflies, bees, and other wildlife in ways that non-native plants cannot. And whereas Georgia is home to more than thirty-eight hundred forty-four native plant species, and some of Georgia's rarest plants are federally listed under the Endangered Species Act of 1973. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, do hereby proclaim April to be Native Plant Month, and encourage public awareness about the benefits of Georgia's native plants to pollinators and other wildlife, to the economy, and to the health and sustainability of our fragile ecosystems. Signed this first day of April, 2025. Welcome.
Testing one. So thank you. It is also National Native Plant Month as of April, so we're just happy as a county in solidarity, we can celebrate. The Augusta River Region Chapter has hosted three plant rescues, fourteen site visits to personal residences to help them retrofit their yard to native plants and recover from Hurricane Helene, and fourteen days at Reed Creek, removing invasive species to make it better and more sustainable for the existing wildlife. It's part of having stunning and sustainable backyards, and we're just thrilled. We also noticed on the agenda, there might be an opportunity if the developer wants to get in touch with us for the sixty-three acres off of Callaway Road, that by rescuing plans, we can put them somewhere and allow them to continue flourishing and nurturing our county.
Very much.
We also have a second proclamation, Observance of Safe Digging Month. Chairman Couch?
We have Hope Marshall here with us tonight from the utility coordinating. Okay. Oh, hey, Jason, how are you? Good to see you. Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas the Augusta-Richmond Columbia County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System and Georgia 811 in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Columbia County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 a Safe Digging Month, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Columbia County to always contact 811 before digging. Signed this first day of April. Solid advice.
It protects everybody.
And it protects the lives and making sure that you're.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda is within the necessary committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this. If I still meet with your approval, I'll accept the motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all the items on the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries on to the debate. Alan, I believe you are up.
Sure. Regarding item I-1-A-1, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a major S-1 revision for property located at tax map 077A, parcel 016C, for the use as a preschool with a new playground in addition to the approved church-related use.
Second.
This major revision is to allow the preschool use. Currently, this is a church. The church is to remain, however, they are going to be leasing some space to this preschool. Since it is not the church that will be running the preschool, it triggers this major revision. So the preschool will go in the existing building. They are looking to add a playground out to the front of the building, roughly in this area. That's a little off, but somewhere in that area. Black chain link fence, vinyl coated chain link fence around the playground. They're also going to do some additional landscaping to soften that look of that playground. But overall, again, if it was just the church doing it, no need to come here. But because they're renting the space, it requires your approval.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Still to you, sir.
Sir, item I-1-A-2. I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at tax map 060, parcel 1755, for three single-family residential lots subject to the conditions enumerated in the March 20th, 2025 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This revision will change the use of this parcel. Currently, it's a three-acre parcel that is zoned for a funeral home. Remember, the cemetery was gonna be to the left of your picture here, which is now Highland Lakes. They're looking to subdivide this into three one-acre lots, residential. Staff has recommended that it be an R-1 type zoning, so they'll have to follow all the R-1 setbacks, the R-1 uses, even though it would be part of a PUD. It's not part of Highland Lakes. These will be three individual houses on their own. There is a condition, they must share access. We do not want three driveways in that section of Williamsburg, right between two major intersections for residential neighborhoods. Have to answer any questions you have.
Questions? The motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Item I-1-A-3. I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from R-1 to R-2 for property located at tax map 060, parcel 013B, for development of a proposed single-family residential subdivision subject to the conditions enumerated in the March 20th, 2025 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This request is for a R-2 zoning for a neighborhood. Looking for the R-2 zoning, we'd give about ten thousand square foot lots. This will accommodate about seventy units when said and done. There are numerous conditions placed on this concerning Callaway Road extension. Basically, that road is gonna be redesigned, rebuilt, so that it can accommodate traffic, fire truck traffic. The cul-de-sac at the end of the road is gonna have to be redesigned to ensure that fire trucks can turn. Water system is gonna have to be upgraded to make sure we have fire protection if this is approved. Turn lanes on Herbert Farm Road onto Callaway Road Extension if the project development process is followed. If it triggers it, that cars would trigger those turn lanes, they will have to install those. We've requested that they also put a left and a right turn lane on Callaway Road Extension. They have to do traffic calming measures. There's a ton of conditions that are laid out in front of you there. If you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer.
Is the developer paying for the road improvements in turn lanes?
They will have to pay for all of it.
It's not only county at all?
Correct.
Have any neighbors?
There were, there were a lot of neighbors that attended the Planning Commission. I don't believe any of them spoke, either for or against. They were in attendance, but, but nothing was put on record.
Mentioned the water, water system?
Right, so they have to, they have to put hydrants in to make sure that they meet fire requirements for hydrant spacing. I believe it's five hundred feet. No, I think it was a thousand feet.
The developer bears the.
Correct.
Financial burden for that. Would those improvements give benefit to the existing neighbor?
Absolutely, yeah. Or putting hydrants out there gives better fire protection as well to the existing residents. The road, obviously, it's widened to twenty-four foot and then beat up stronger. It'll be a better road for the existing residents as well.
I know you said that no, no neighbor spoke, but did they send any, any emails or?
Where, Will, do you have, you have no record. I will point out, this early concept plan that was shown showed Callaway Road being brought into the neighborhood, and then the neighborhood having to tee into it. We've made it very clear that that is not acceptable. They will have to maintain Callaway Road as, as is, so that they do not interrupt the existing traffic. So this area right here will have to be reworked in some way to, to keep Callaway Road straight.
Density difference, this was R-1, now going to R-2, is it doubling the number of homes that could be?
I could say if it's doubling, what they're showing is about 1.88 units per acre. If you did R-1, that's gonna be probably one or less, so it's not exactly double. What you think, Will, one or less on R-1?
I mean, if you have silver there, you could get a thirty thousand square foot lot, probably. Their concept plan shows seventy, that's probably meaning.
Said 1.8?
1.88 units per acre. What the, now this concept is not binding. There is a concept that will be brought to the Planning Commission, I believe it's Thursday night. Planning Commission will actually see the concept, so that's why I'm giving you about numbers, 'cause this isn't, the concept is not being voted on, just the zoning. There's a variance, it's gonna be requested Thursday night as well to, to, then how long a cul-de-sac can be without turnaround. So that variance will be coming for you eventually. So right now, it's, it's, it's not firm what the actual density will be. This concept shows a density of about 1.88 units per acre. Growth Management Plan says we can go up to three in this area, or less than what Growth Management Plan.
Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Carries four to one. Oh no, excuse me, Commissioner Allen.
I have one more. Golly, we're hot today. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to setback ninety-ninety-eight for property located at tax map 077A, parcel 011E, to reduce building setbacks to twenty feet adjacent to tax map 077A, parcels 099A and 100, and to three feet against the CSX right-of-way, and remove the maximum front building setback.
Second.
Sounds more complicated than it is. So CSX owns this property here.
I've lost my ability to draw. So that CSX right-of-way is through there. They're asking to reduce the setback to three foot along that property line. Building up against a railroad, not a major concern for us. They're asking to reduce to a 20-foot building setback along that property line. That is a, I believe it's C2 parcel there against the M2 parcel. Code calls for a 40-foot setback, but it is similar uses. Dropping it from a 40-foot building setback to a 20-foot setback makes sense. There's an existing house here, existing office, I should say. That currently meets the front building setbacks. However, they plan on taking that building down and putting something new in that area. Not a binding conceptual plan, so they're asking for a little leniency on where they can put that building. So they're asking not to have to meet that 125-foot front setback. So the building may stop, you know, somewhere up here. If they were to tear this down and build the first building in the back, they would also not be meeting the setback. So asking for the front setback variance to go away is understandable. But this use, it's a contractor's warehouse, contractor's storage. Kind of having that away from the road actually makes sense as well. It's not shoved up on the road real tight in your face. So this kind of gives a little break from the, through traffic to see in those warehouses as well.
Any comment from the adjacent property owners?
We're, we're one of them, so we own this property. He owns that. That's our maintenance facility, design construction facility. This is a, I believe it's a grooming, Halls in Paradise, leave the name of it. I'm not aware of any concern.
No, no, no concern. Raise your right hand.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. I make a motion to postpone the change order number one with MB Khan for the UV Advanced Oxidation Treatment to the April 15th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
This will allow staff to continue working with that contractor, have some meetings before we bring that to you. Final vote.
Questions? Ever raise your right hand? Carries.
I make a motion to approve the letter of support to the Georgia Department of Transportation for the widening project for State Route 47, Highway 221 from Appeling to Harlem, Georgia, along with providing $2 million in county funds for the project once approved by the Department of Transportation.
Second.
The staff has been working with DOT, their district office, as well as our MPO. We actually submitted this project through our MPO, Metropolitan Organization for Funding, through the feds, through the state, to start this project. Unfortunately, they decided, I say they, DOT, MPO, decided that we can't apply for this project through them because the entire project does not lie within the boundaries. So there's some kind of infighting between DOT. Part of DOT says we can, part of DOT says we can't. Well, instead of fighting, DOT came to us and said, if you'll take the same match you were going to give MPO and give it to us, we'll handle the project, we'll start this project. So, $2 million match would go towards them to help them with the scoping phase and into the preliminary engineering phase. Nothing has been started at this point with this project, so we don't know termini. We know the, the starting point, the northern starting point will be where the four-lane stops coming out of Appeling. It drops to a two-lane, they'll start there. They'll have to study the corridor to figure out where the turbinate is to the south, whether it be before the Harlem City limits, whether it goes through Harlem City limits to a certain point. All that'll be studied, so nothing's set in stone now. This is just a project that both Columbia County wants, DOT wants, and this is a way of us kind of helping seed that project along, getting some support out of Atlanta to push this project through. DOT seems to think with this letter of support, they'll have funding approved July 1 to start this project.
Once you get the funding, then it goes into design, then you've got right-of-way acquisition, and then?
10 years.
Okay, that's, that was my question, because by the time you do utilities and all that.
DOT project, if they work it fast, seven to eight years to start turning dirt. So, I say 10, just involves a federal highway as well, got to cross the interstate. So there's some, there's some things to work out. You got to go in front of a couple of schools. So there's a lot of details that have to be thought about, project. So I say 10 years before you actually say project.
Will, they work with each entity as far as getting feedback from the Department of Education, from the county? It also goes into city limits through the downtown?
Right.
Potentially?
They will. They'll have public hearings, so they'll invite the public out to hear the plan. So absolutely, they'll talk with the cities for their, the city, not cities, the city, the Board of Education. Absolutely, they'll bring them all in. We'll be heavily involved, well, with our industrial park. It'll be right in front of our industrial park.
Okay. And they'll, I guess you use population projections?
They do. They have to forecast out 20 years, so anything DOT does has to be done based on true data. So they can't just go widen a road because they think they want to widen a road. They have to do the study, they have to come back with the data, provide the, the... Provided that the data supports the widening, they then move forward with the design and acquisition of property and construction. All these studies have to be done first.
Other questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. No legal matters or no requests for a committee? We have one public comment. Marlena Bergeron?
Thank you again for that proclamation earlier. Marlena Bergeron, 2545 Willow Creek Court. True story. I brought three library books to Athens, Georgia for one of my classes, and I left them on the table in the visitor's center and didn't know until I got home. So I had to either drive back the next day or have them mailed, and I was so embarrassed. But because of the pine system being all interconnected, the education coordinator was able to return them on my behalf, no harm, no foul. And the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. And taken as a whole, the library has all of our hearts. Next week is National Library Week, and the Friends of the Library meet tomorrow at 11:00 AM. Do we have any commissioners who are Friends of the Library? Well, we could really use your support right now. We need the dues. The library has not had an author visit in over a year. It would be great to have you be a part of it. Happy Poetry Month! So I'm here.
Wait a minute, native tree and poetry?
Yeah.
How about that?
It's a very busy month. And Earth Day, and Easter. Got to love it. So let the record reflect that I defended trees and talking leaves, which is the Cherokee word for books. I am here in my own way because I have a particular set of skills, and not one of them is brevity, I'm sorry to say. I'm not trying to pick a fight. I'm here to protect our library, our funding, and our Bill of Rights. This poem is called "Bookworms Unite." Put your Columbia County library guidelines to a vote. Since on September, since on September, since on September 3rd, no transparency, no one from the public spoke. No librarians nor experts from the law were able to scrutinize your document nor weigh in on how this would not be good at all. Two nebulous, no direction, no guidance on graphic books, fiction or nonfiction. No nudity, but a nonfiction book about anatomy? Please. How else do kids learn their gluteus maximus from their knees? The books with parts found obscene have been leapfrogging around the collection, and we found out last month that a couple of books are missing, and nine are temporarily unavailable and taken out of circulation. You said you were not in the business of banning books. This toxic and unconstitutional mess is worse than it looks. First gay characters in books were targeted. Now you're threatening to criminalize librarians, who are intellectuals. Your consent agenda for March 18th had two bids for building more prison cells. And even though you pile and bury agenda items, changes, and charges, I swear sometimes you're worse than Xfinity. But our eyes see what they see. And this isn't North Korea, the Cultural Revolution in China, or Germany 1933. And perhaps you think I do speak in too much hyperbole, but could this be happening today in Columbia County? And maybe you think my concern for our three libraries is an overreaction. But we cannot, not for a second, let discrimination and intolerance gain traction. I called libraries all over the state and met other librarians and parents gathering to speak against SB 74, and their boards backed them up. So why, oh, why here have things gone amok? It has much more to do with this than with this. People found each other. They found what they liked and didn't. And they didn't like some authors. And now they're trying to control our access to those books because they can't control what's in it. You want to fill the bottom shelf of the kids' department with Cash Patel? Go for it, might as well. But the books that are already there, please, let them be. Let them rotate through naturally. Look, the library is vital to our community. We want it here in perpetuity. It's the spirit and soul of democracy. Before there was Google, before Wikipedia, or an encyclopedia, there was the library for books and media. The librarians helped us with essential services after Hurricane Helene. The librarians were there for us all through COVID and quarantines. The amazing Alex helped me with my phone, our chess skills, and AI, bird watching, 3D printing, and coding with Raspberry Pi. And I just found out, you told his programs, goodbye. You can check out a sewing machine, a puzzle, or guitar, and the best people and the best access to books within our pine system by far. Put our Christian compassion in action. Protect our freedom to choose our free market and free will. Please rescind the guidelines. Tell the Pharisees and Sadducees to write their own children's books, or start a YouTube channel. Our public library is a bastion of neutrality, not a place for a scorched earth mentality. It's our library too. But go ahead, if you must. You do you. And ramrod unconstitutional guidelines and maybe SB 74 through. Just know you're messing with the wrong pack of nerds. Truth and time will have the last word. And if we fail as a library, or a community, or as a country, it won't be because of an enemy from within. It'll be because we failed to see each other as neighbors and fellow brethren.
Executive Session, there are three items. Caraway, I believe you have the first one.
Sir, M1A, I make a motion to approve the employment agreement with the Greater Clarksville Regional Library System and Amanda Hamm to provide services as the Director of Greater Clarksville Regional Library System.
Second.
I can take it. It's, uh, this is for the regional library system. They do choose their own director. This is a state position. They have chosen one of our branch managers to do this, so we're just the conduit here. It's all state funds for state position.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve Class D vehicle and smartphone allowances for the Superior Court judges as of April 1st, 2025.
Second.
Just as a result of the budget process, we realized that our judges were not getting the car allowances and the, and the smartphone allowances that the other employees get. We do have those for other elected officials. So it was prudent that we give those to the judges as well, and we're asking those to be effective immediately due to what I feel is a bit of an oversight.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Couch, I believe you have the last one.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve $13,400 to Larry and Emily Wyatt, parcel 072395, and $28,000 to Terrence Price, parcel 067023, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Herbert Farm Road widening project.
Second.
Standard negotiations for the property acquisition, this puts 65%.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. I believe that's all the business we have tonight.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ever raise your right hand? We are adjourned.